Hi, I'm Christina Holtz and I'm a volunteer and steering committee member with the League of Women Voters of Hamilton-Wenham. The League is a nonpartisan political organization which encourages informed and active participation in government. For more than 60 years, the League of Women Voters of Hamilton-Wenham has been hosting a candidate's night as part of our voter education program. Our goal is to provide a forum for candidates to introduce themselves and some of their ideas to the community, so that voters will be more informed at upcoming elections. Tonight, we welcome the seven candidates for the school committee race in Hamilton and Wenham. There are three seats open and each seat is for a term of three years. For tonight's event, we solicited questions from our membership and town residents. The candidates running for school committee are Courtney Ashwood, David Frankel, Amy Kunberger, Lauren Lambert, David Palito, Brian Scudder, and Andrea Van Boven. Unfortunately, Andrea and Lauren are unable to attend and send their regrets. Also joining us tonight is my fellow steering committee member Tess Leary. Tess will be our timekeeper. And now I'd like to introduce our moderator, Wenham resident Paul Mihailidis. Paul is a professor of civic media and journalism and assistant dean in the School of Communications at Emerson College in Boston, where he teaches media literacy, civic media, and community participation. He is founding program director of the Masters in Media Design, senior fellow of the Emerson Engagement Lab, and faculty chair and director of the Salzburg Academy on Media and Global Change. This is our third year that Paul has generously volunteered his services to be our moderator on Zoom, and we are very grateful for his help. Paul?
Thanks Christina, and thanks for that kind introduction. I'm also a bad cook and I like to play basketball. It's my pleasure to be with you all this evening and to moderate this debate. And before we go over the rules, I think it's important first to thank you for your time here tonight, but also you and the others for all the time and effort you've put into advocating for our schools and committing yourselves to community service. I think through all these processes, it shouldn't be lost on us that community service is at the core of what strong and vibrant towns are. And I think we should all remember that it's this time and effort and service and donating that, whether it's with school committees, whether it's with other committees in town or coaching sports that make our towns what they are. So on behalf of the League of Women Voters, I want to thank them for hosting this, and I want to thank all of you for dedicating and donating all the time you've done so far, and those of you that will continue in this capacity, and if not, hopefully in other capacities. So I know everyone in Hamilton-Wenham really appreciates it, and it's also great to be with you almost in person, but at least to be able to hear and be with you where you can listen to each other's ideas and let the town know where you stand on these efforts. So with that, we're going to dive right in. We have opening statements and then we'll have three questions. You'll have two minutes for your opening statement and two minutes for each of the three questions. And then we will have closing statements, which are also two minutes. And where I used to have to remind people of time, Tess has now generously volunteered as a timekeeper and will have in her screen on the gallery, the time countdown. So I will be rendered almost useless in that regard, but I'll just remind you all to please keep an eye on that timing. And when it does expire, please try to wrap up when we'll move to the next question. We have ordered, we have randomly selected the order for the first opening statements, and then alphabetical by last name shifted through. So because there's five of you here tonight, it works out that everyone will have an opportunity to answer a question first, and then down the line as well. And so we'll move through this and then we'll have closing statements, which will be two minutes as well. Everyone feel okay with that?
Yes, fine.
Great, wonderful. So we're going to dive right in with opening statements. And Amy, you'll have the first opening statement, followed by David, Brian, Courtney, David Frankel. We'll go at the end. So we're going to ask for two minutes on the clock and the opening statements to explain a little bit about yourselves and why you've decided to run for school committee. So Amy, you get to go first.
Great, thanks Paul. Hi, I'm Amy Kunberger and I'm running for school committee. I've lived in the community for five years. I live in Hamilton. I am a big believer in public schools. I grew up in Massachusetts. I was educated in Massachusetts Public Schools. I attended a Massachusetts State University for my undergraduate degree. A few weeks away from earning my MFA at Boston University, where I've been a part-time lecturer. I'm a small business owner of 17 years and a mom of two amazing children at the Winter Elementary School. My experience and my perspective that I can bring to the school committee is that I guide my own early learners, my own children, and I receive newly graduated high school students as a lecturer. And I want to work to equip all of our learners and to support them in their successes. Because my schedule is so flexible, I've been able to volunteer this year in the Winter School Cafeteria. I was helping to meet the needs of the staff shortages during the pandemic. I love helping the schools. I love being in the schools. And this experience in the cafeteria has inspired me to do more and inspired me to run for school committee. And if I'm elected, I will further this commitment by working with our children and our families to move forward in the pandemic recovery and to support our students. And I know that together as a community, we can open new opportunities for everybody. We can create a long-term strategy to build on our academic excellence and we can bring our district to new heights. I'm so grateful for this opportunity to talk with everyone tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. David Palito, you get next. So who you are and why you're interested in continuing along with the school committee?
Sure, great. Thank you for having me here tonight. Just want to thank the League of Women Voters. I think this is a great night. Can you guys hear me all right? I am on my phone. All right. So I just want to thank everyone for being here. And I really just want to thank everyone for actually running for school committee. I've been here for six years now, and there's been far too many years where races were either uncontested or we really had to find candidates to even fill the seats that were open. So actually seeing this level of involvement, or people who really want to be involved in the community and in the committee is really, you know, I'm really happy to see it, right? I mean, it's great. It's hard work and not a lot of people want to do it. So it's really refreshing actually seeing all these candidates come in. So myself, I am David Palito. I am finishing up my second term as a school board member, which will be six years, excuse me. Two of those years, I was chair of the board. I've been on the negotiations committee for four years now, the policy committee for four years. I've really sort of touched just about every part of our district and really been in the weeds during the deep dive as far as committee work and subcommittee work. Excuse me. My personal background, I actually hold a Masters in Curriculum and Instruction. And I hold an educational specialist degree in educational leadership. I just finished up coursework from the Howard Graduate School of Education and School Management and Leadership. I currently teach middle school in Lynn, Massachusetts. I've actually taught at the middle school, high school, community college, and college level. I've actually created curriculum at the college level and won an award for curriculum design from the Boston Public School System way back, all the way back in 1999. So I've been involved for a long, long time now. I just look forward to keep going.
Thanks, thanks David. Now we know what the red dot means, too. There you go. It's not intimidating. Next is, next we'll go to Brian.
Yeah, yeah, thanks Paul. Yeah, I'll echo David's comments. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting the event, allowing all the candidates to speak to what each one brings to the table when it comes to school committee matters. I've lived in the community for about 10 years. My kids are in very different stages of their education. I have a freshman son at the high school, honor roll student, plays several sports. Third grade daughter, similarly plays several sports, loves music, loves art. And a pre-K son who's kind of at the front end of learning what he's passionate about. But I've been very active in the community from a coaching sports perspective. Sat on the youth football board, current active member on the board for Agwo Mute Hockey, which has served our community for decades to effectively promote teamwork, leadership, togetherness. From a professional background perspective, I have degrees in finance and accounting from Indiana University. I've worked in public accounting for about 15 years. I'm a CPA and a non-equity partner with my firm. Yeah, I moved to town from Boston because of the schools. And I'm really running for school committee because I think we may have lost sight of what's most important for our school district and looking to maybe reprioritize some of our upcoming initiatives, especially after the pandemic-induced learning loss that all the children experienced. So frankly, I'm really committed to bringing Hamilton-Wenham back to its historical reputation of academic excellence. Thanks.
Great, thanks Brian, appreciate it. Courtney, you're up next.
Am I officially on the clock? I don't want to get extra seconds. It still says stop. Okay, I'm going to talk. All right. Hi, Courtney Ashwood. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, League of Women Voters. Excited that we could all finally be semi-together in person tonight, guys. Nice to kind of meet you all. I grew up in Wenham and I graduated from the high school in 1994. You can do the math. But one of the things that's always kind of carried through my post-high school career is people always complimenting me on my writing skills. And they say, Courtney, you articulate yourself so well. You write so well. And they say, where did you learn that? And I always kind of look at the high school, and it's the absolute truth. And so my husband and I were shopping around for what we really wanted for our two children, and we moved back in 2016. And we're super psyched that we did. I still love this community. I still think these schools are awesome. So really kind of what motivated me to run is, you know, it's very nostalgic to walk through Bessie Buca again with my little boy. It's the same building I walked through when I was his age, or the high school. I think it was a little turbulent during the pandemic. There was learning loss. It was hard. And that's not a knock on anybody. It's just a reality. It was hard. It was hard for teachers. It was hard for parents. It was hard for kids. And there's only so much you can do through the budget. So it motivates you as a parent in the community, as someone who's been a member of the community for so many years now. You love the community and you want to help. And so that's why I decided to run. I want to help. And I have my Masters in Business, concentrate in Human Resources. So I think I'm pretty good at conflict management and tough situations. I'm a mom of two kids in the school system. What's more stressful than being a mom? So I think I'll be up to the challenges and willing to fight and help in any way that I can.
Thanks Courtney, really appreciate it. And last opening statement goes to David Frankel.
Thank you. Thanks to the League of Women Voters for the opportunity. I'm David Frankel. My family and I have lived in Wenham since 2008. Our daughter Ruth and granddaughter Rena live with us, and Rena attends Buca. We know firsthand how important public schools are. All of our family members have attended public schools from kindergarten through university. And I have 50 years of business leadership experience in high technology field, as well as safety planning and advocacy for nonprofits. I have a professional mental health background and experience working as a CEO and board member for a mental health business. This past two years, our schools and community experienced many challenges of mental and physical health and safety, as well as academic effectiveness. As children pivoted from remote and hybrid learning experiences, if you were referencing earlier. I promised to bring an empathetic and evidence-based approach as a member of the school committee. One area really close to my heart is special education. Having experienced firsthand, one of our children who dealt with being ADHD and dyslexic. In fact, the whole family got to deal with that. So I know what a struggle that can be. And I'd like to work on improving this area in our district. I think it's a chronic problem in all the school system. I'll stand up for students, teachers, and taxpayers. My goal will be to move our schools forward, working and implementing robust strategic plans. This is an area where I feel like I can particularly contribute based on extensive professional strategic planning experience. I'll work to bring collaborative, long-term solutions to our schools and unite behind a common vision and a set of goals. So thanks again for the opportunity tonight.
Thanks David, and thanks everyone for those introductions. It's really great to be able to hear about your personal stories and about your aspirations for our towns and our schools in particular. We're going to move into questions now, and we have three questions. And everyone will have two minutes to answer those questions. And the questions tackle different components of our schools and ask you to talk a little bit about your background and some of the issues that our towns are facing. Once again, we'll rotate through the order. This time, we'll start with David P. on the first question. And I'll let folks know who's going to go, and then we'll continue the rotation. So our first question is about you. And we're asking, and we'll start with David, the skills that you have that you think will actually improve the overall school committee. So what skills do you think you'll bring to the school committee to improve that body and that body's work overall? So David P., we'll start with you.
Great, thanks. One word, experience, right? You know, I've been doing this job for six years now. And my education supports this role. When we were hiring a new superintendent and we were going through the process and we were writing out all the things a candidate needed, I actually checked all the boxes. So I actually meet all that. So in a word, it's experience, and that's why I'm actually running. With a new superintendent, with newer, we'll work on two plus years for Vinnie Leone, our Assistant Superintendent. You know, I would actually bring the institutional knowledge of this district to the board, right? If I was not to win this election, the ranking member of the school board would have been here for two years. And while it's obviously capable of functioning, and I'm not saying it would not, by any means, everything would come to a standstill. Actually, having someone who has the experience of been doing this for a long time can sometimes answer a lot of questions and ideas that come up at the table, right? It's just sort of, you know, if someone comes up with an idea of what we can do, like, oh, well, we actually tried that back in 2017, but ran into these such and such roadblocks. And it just saves hours and hours of research and time of, you know, and really trying to get things accomplished. So that's definitely what I bring. And I also think that our district's in a very good place right now. Yes, we did suffer learning loss, just like every other student in America and around the world. But our district, we were actually still doing a lot of work behind the scenes through the pandemic, and we're in a really good place moving forward. We have this opportunity to build a new building. And some field projects are about to come online. And I put in the work to actually get those to the place where they are. And so I'm actually running again because I want to see them to fruition.
Thanks David. Yeah, we got to the, I'm good. See it on the phone, but really appreciate it. Brian, the question is to you. So we're asking about the skills that you have and how you would bring those to make the school committee a stronger working body.
Sure. Yeah, thanks Paul. So my skills that I've developed over time, especially throughout my professional career, include significant project management, having the ability to really develop internal and external relationships, negotiate client contracts for sustainable revenue streams in the future, establishing controls around budgeting and forecasting, and frankly, how to effectively run a business during each stage of its lifecycle. And so I really trust that these skills will translate to what the school committee currently needs, especially during its future conversations around the proposed new school, upcoming feasibility study. I believe my professional skillset will bring fresh ideas to the committee in a way that is really responsible to the community, always with a focus on the student body. While I consider myself to have several business-related skills, including the ability to analyze financial information and make decisions based off of that, I would say two of my strongest skills are really developing relationships, as mentioned before, and collaborating with others. Even when differences of opinions can arise across the table. But I trust we can find common ground and compromise where necessary when approaching key school committee issues. At the end of the day, the committee, including the superintendent and assistant superintendent, is a team after all. Thanks.
Thanks Brian, I appreciate it. And you get the first extra credit points for being efficient and under the time. So Courtney, you're next on the question of what skills do you think you'd bring to make the school committee a stronger, stronger overall body?
Okay, so my undergrad degree was actually in sports medicine. And as soon as I realized that was all nights and weekends, I went back to school so that I could have a life. And I focused on human resources. And the funny thing about HR is you're really kind of a liaison between the business and the employee. And you're helping the business set their goals and vision and achieve them, but you also need to make sure the employees are engaged, they understand the policies benefit them. You're making tough budget decisions. You're hiring and firing. You're constantly reviewing MRV data and salaries. Are we equitable? Are we in line with the market? You're constantly involved in difficult discussions and decisions. And you really have to kind of learn to take the emotion out of it. Look at the facts, apply policy. What have we done in the past? What's worked? What hasn't? You've got to be analytical. Sometimes you've got to be creative. You don't have the money. How can we engage the employees and bring something to the table to make them happy? We can't give them a raise this year. What are we going to do to smooth that over? So I have like 17 years' experience in kind of trying to bridge that gap. And I think on the school committee, you're working with the superintendent, you're trying to help teachers, you're trying to help your teammates on the committee, but you're also trying to keep parents engaged and aware, and they understand what's happening. And so they're not always going to be happy. They're not always going to be super psyched about some of the discussions. You're going to get negative press and feedback. And you kind of got to learn to roll with that. And I think I have a really good background for that.
Great, thanks Courtney. David Frankel, the question is over to you on what skills you would bring to make the school committee a stronger, a stronger working body?
Sure. Well, I'd start with, I've just got a ton of business experience that was in large and small businesses, global and startup level. And so I think collaborative problem-solving skills, I put at the top because I think the school committee is very much about a collaborative process and collaboration and lobbying between the school committee and the other committees in order to achieve any kind of strategic outcome. So that strategic planning has been a very strong part of my professional work. Budget negotiations, when you're doing your own startups and growing those, you're raising money and you're building budgets and revising them all the time and negotiating internally and externally with the board and with investors. And so it's very analogous. Lobbying for funding, I see it is very important that the school, this district is able to tap state and federal funds. And I think there's more of that to be had for a variety of reasons, and I think I can help with that. I'm very well-networked, which can help gain more access to funds. I too have a good deal of project management experience and really understand how to build a plan and see that's executed, get buy-in in the plan. And just from a decision-making point of view, I'm really very, I was trained as a physicist, very much an evidence-based kind of person, and that's true in mental health as well, in medicine in general. And I was a great believer in public education and experiential learning. Active learning is, I think, the approach to education that I'm very fond of as a subject. So thank you.
Thanks David. And Amy, you are last with this question. So over to you.
Thanks. So I just want to start with a skill that's hard to define, but I want to say that I'm a great listener. I've been watching school committee meetings since my oldest was starting kindergarten. And as a parent and as an educator, I'm a natural listener. I enjoy conversation. Sorry about the road noise. I enjoy a conversation and hearing different points of view. It's important in my work. I've often said during the pandemic, that no matter what happens, we are one community. And I respect everybody's point of view. I make informed decisions based on hearing all sides and doing research into what a professional has to say about something, as well as I would look at similar communities and how other entities have handled similar circumstances to make decisions. Communication, as a designer, I'm a professional communicator. And I use this in my academic career as well. Clear and direct communication is always my focus. And if elected, I hope to increase transparency and engagement community-wide, with parents, with teachers, with students, and with taxpayers, so that we can tackle the challenges ahead together and achieve everyone's goals. Another skill that I have is budgeting. As a freelance designer, all of my clients have a tight budget that I need to stay within to help them meet their goals and objectives. I'm comfortable working within a budget, and I frequently have to find very creative ways to move things around in order to find new ideas to spend less and get more for the money that my clients are spending. As far as my academic skills go, I have unique insight into a wide range of student needs, from parenting my own elementary-age students, children and their peers, to my undergraduate students that I work with. And I have lots of research experience. Again, in my work, accurate information is of utmost importance. And I regularly employ academic research methods to make decisions for myself, my family, and to share information with my students. And I would do the same on the school committee.
Thanks Amy, really appreciate it. And thanks everybody for that question. We will get back to issues of budget and projects in the second question, the last question here. But the next question we have for this group, building on your skillset is as follows. And Brian, you'll answer this one. The past two years have been disrupted due to COVID. Going forward, how do you feel the district can best support the mental and emotional health of our students?
Thanks Paul. So look, I think we need to really focus on various programs and tools that can help track where we currently are today, where the students, where their literacy stands, math, et cetera. And I think that goes back to some of the ideas that the school committee talked about regarding Amplify. And I thought that was an incredible idea. And frankly, I think it starts with understanding where we are today. And from there, I think we can help, from whether it's folks that are severely, with severe learning loss, to those who may not have you know, with severe learning loss to those who may not have experienced such a loss. You know, to develop individual platforms and plans for those, you know, kind of buckets of students, I would say. With that becomes understanding, you know, the mental hardship that it took. And, you know, frankly, I just think that starts with just transparent communication. And, you know, again, if I'm elected, that would be one of the highest priorities in terms of monitoring that loss and what the effects are that they have had with the kids. I just personally know a couple in town who are going through some really nasty stuff, you know, talking about elementary-age kids, and it's heartbreaking. So that's kind of where I would start and hope to, you know, get on board with the committee to learn about other ideas as well.
Great. Thanks, Brian. Courtney, you're next in this question, and I'll repeat the question. The past two years have been disrupted due to COVID. And going forward, how do you feel the district can best support the mental and emotional health of our students?
Yeah, I mean, that's a tough one because I haven't worked directly within the schools yet to see what kind of tools and resources they really have access to. But I will say, my own experience, my children, especially my daughter, COVID hit when she was in sixth grade, and that was her first middle school year, which is a tough year for kids. And, you know, the remote learning really, it was tough for her. She's shy, her personality. And so she wouldn't want to put her camera on, right? She kept it dark the whole time. And I would sometimes hear the teacher prodding, Lila, put your camera on. And I would go, Lila, put your camera on, you know, and try to encourage her as her mom. And then as we transitioned back to hybrid, one of her teachers actually noticed in classroom, she was physically shaking. And the anxiety was kicking in. And it took, it took a toll. I was so appreciative of that teacher picking up on that social cue and bringing that to our attention. And, you know, I talked with her pediatrician, and that led to other outlets and programs where we could help build her confidence of being in front of her peers again after such a disconnected period of time. Human connection, you can leverage that so easily, you know, when you see a child like that struggling, and you feel that compassion to reach out and as their teacher, as the superintendent, as the principal, as a volunteer in the classroom, noticing it, acknowledging it, and, you know, working together as a community to help these kids overcome that. I was extremely grateful for the feedback. You know, and in terms of what kind of tools, yeah, totally on board with that. These kids suffered. And how can we help equip our teachers, our educators with helping them through that? Thank you.
Thanks, Courtney. Much appreciated. David Frankel, the question is to you. Coming out of these past two years of COVID, how do you feel the district can best support the mental and emotional health of our students?
Yeah, that's a great question. As a matter of fact, the mental health company that I ran, we were doing a lot of telehealth cognitive behavioral therapy for Harvard, MIT, and a bunch of the colleges. Not so much in the high schools. And we were working with some pediatric practices. The first thing is to run screening questionnaires so you can pick out those children that have anxiety and depression. And I noticed in our business, when COVID hit, there was a huge acceleration in the numbers of people that were suffering from anxiety and depression, at all age levels, actually. So once you've screened those, then how to get them therapy, it's certainly more convenient to do it with telehealth in terms of scheduling and parent schedules and getting the students to and from the appointments and keeping their appointments. That, you know, whether we're funded to do that, I don't know. It certainly should be a priority because it puts a huge burden on the family to have a child that's particularly in a high level of anxiety and dangerous, particularly in the mid-teen years of depression, leads to self-harm and suicide elevated, elevated levels that we've seen. So, yeah, more mental health support and finding the funding to actually do that.
Thanks, David. Next, we'll go to Amy. So Amy, it's, the question is about how you think the district should best support the mental and emotional health of our students coming, emerging out of the last two years of COVID?
Yeah, thank you. Well, as a parent and a person who works with young adults, I'm encouraged that there's been so much conversation and support around mental health initiatives in the schools. I think that the district can support students by immediately continuing to take advantage of emergency funds as their funds to support programs related to social and emotional recovery. You know, we do have counselors in our schools. Our family has taken advantage of them now and again. And I think that is a program that we should talk about more and encourage families to take advantage of in their households and really engage the parents and the rest of the family in that work, because I think that is the key to helping those students. And, you know, there's other factors to consider. We lost some educators, you know? Maybe we need to develop some programs like pipelines from local colleges and universities in order to bring educators into the schools that have this learning. And I know too that, you know, we have, I feel like in the beginning of the pandemic, especially, we had a lot of parent volunteers that wanted to help, but needed something to do. And we talked a lot about like building outdoor classrooms and things like that. Are there ways to leverage community volunteers to help, you know, create booklets to share information of families? And I think as a community, now that we, now that people are being open about these types of issues, I think we can all work together to make this happen.
Great. Thanks, Amy. And David, Dave P., you have the last, the last stab at the second question around mental and emotional health of our students and how we can best report that coming out of COVID.
Great. Thank you. I actually figured out how do I get the timer on my screen as well. So, you know, this is obviously a very important subject coming out of, you know, COVID and in the crazy two years we have. The, you know, thing that we should really think about, or I'd like to sort of think about is that we've actually been, had this on our horizon for quite some time now. This is something that, you know, the social-emotional well-being of our students is something that was actually a priority of our district for the past few years. You know, there are certain programs we have up in the high school, like RISE, that's sort of developed for this, for students that are having a hard time, who might end up having to leave school for a bit to actually get the help they need, you know, which has been on the rise, you know, culminating in, you know, hospitalizations after, you know, after COVID. Right now, everyone's sort of talking about all the hospitalizations that were, that are happening with our student body after COVID. But the thing is, those numbers have been steadily creeping up for the past few years, and it's something we've been aware of. It just in our budget that's being voted on April 2nd, a few days from now, you know, we do have a a new social worker coming on board as part of that budget, you know, to actually get ahead of this. This is something that we, you know, take very seriously. We have for quite some time within the district. And, you know, we've been tracking the data for years and really doing a good job. As Courtney said, you know, our teachers are our first line of defense. We do have social workers throughout the district, all elementary school, in the elementary schools, middle and high school. You know, I know my son Rocco loves to just go down and, you know, chalk at his elementary school. When we got that phone call about how he was a frequent visitor down there, but we love it because this is how kids stay healthy mentally. And, you know, we have the systems in place that we're all looking to increase.
Thanks, David. Really appreciate it. And really appreciate, it's a tough question. And I know that mental and emotional health is really kind of a, it's a pressing issue in our town with all our children. And it's, there's no, there's no easy answer. It's connected to everything from our classrooms to our budget to support programs. So really appreciate hearing this wide, wide range of, wide range of ideas. The last question before closing statements is more about the kind of infrastructure of our schools. And we'll start this question with Courtney. And the question is, how would you plan to improve school buildings, athletic fields, and learning supports within this current limited budget? So paying attention to our budget capacity, what would your plan to be to improve our school buildings, athletic fields, and learning support?
Sure. So, you know, the budget is obviously a concern. The exciting news, like David said, you know, Cutler's application being accepted by the MSBA. I think I saw some chatter on Facebook about a possible light reno for a theater. So that's nice. You know, I think it's going to be really challenging to address what we really need to address, given the budget. So, you know, I know I've heard chatter about private donors, and it seems like everybody was on board with, you know, company advertisements possibly. But what, you know, take the Ed Fund, for example, they do a great, great job. They get donations and they put awesome scholarships or, you know, different things in the schools. So how can we leverage fundraising in this community to maybe address some of these, you know, like a one-time or, you know, a couple donations over a few months from people in the community rather than going after their tax base? And, you know, my kids are kind of in the middle right now. They're one's in fifth grade, he's going to be a sixth grader, one's going to the high school, and they're right in the thick of it with sports. And I can tell you, the buzz around town is parents, I think, are willing to do it. They participate in fundraisers. They want to help. They want to see the facilities get improved. They know we've got seniors on a fixed income. We've got a tight budget. We've increased taxes. They're high right now. But that doesn't mean we can't come together as a community and address and tackle these issues. And I think that's a really exciting place for the community to be in, is that the superintendent seems on board, the school committee seems on board, the community seems on board. It should be a pretty easy item for whoever gets elected to tackle this one and get it over the hump.
Thanks, Courtney. You really appreciate it. And as someone who serves on the board of the Ed Fund, I'm going to take that as a personal compliment that we do great work. So we are trying at the Ed Fund, you know, obviously to support the schools as well. David Frankel, the question is to you. How would you plan to improve our school buildings, athletic fields, learning supports, and infrastructure within our current limited budget?
Well, yeah, I think what David Palito has been working on in terms of getting the state funds for a rebuild, that's obviously a really key initiative to support. But I think there's more state and federal funds that can be tapped, ESA funds. For example, the Boston Public Schools have got a lot of ESA funds to do a major makeover of the air quality in those buildings. I think they went through twenty-seven thousand windows. But most importantly, they funded CO2 and particle monitoring in every room. And that's a key to, particularly once you've taken off masks, to mitigating the risks, is to verify the ventilation and therefore the dilution of any viral load or any transmittable disease. So I see that as something that ESA has funded before, and I think we could get ESA funds for that. The other initiative, I was speaking to the people that have got the zero-carbon footprint by 2040 initiative going today is to introduce solar panels to the school and drive down their electricity cost. And that should be a real priority because there's a bunch of federal and state initiatives that will provide funding for that. So once again, that's an improvement that meets a lot of objectives, the zero-carbon objective, but it drives down what is quite a large cost. The electricity, I think that the school, the high school is probably the biggest single user of electricity in the town. And that's just two examples. I think there's probably other federal and state money we could tap. And that's a lobbying exercise and a hunt it down kind of exercise. And I think I would throw my weight behind that.
Thanks, David. Amy, the question is over to you. How do you plan to improve school buildings, athletic fields, and learning supports within our current limited budget?
Very apparent that we need more of a budget to stay current with our educational and facility needs. I definitely don't want to ask our taxpayers to do more, and we're nearing a tax levy anyway. We have a significant senior population who are living on a fixed income. I'm really sensitive to that. My mom belongs to that community in a different town. The largest expense as the school district we have is teacher salary and insurance. And it's really important to be competitive in this area in order to attract and retain top talent. I don't see extraneous spending in the budget. I see families funding things like supplies and athletics. And I know the school committee has been discussing this and working on that throughout the time I've been living here and watching meetings. A lot of things seem to come down to the lack of tax revenue opportunities in our towns. And I hear a lot of talk comparing our facilities to towns like Beverly or Winfield, but those towns are so much bigger and have a larger tax base, commercial tax base. And, you know, we talk a lot about rank, too. We need to be able to fund better facilities. And I'm wondering, I'm thinking too, we can look at, we could maybe partner with other districts to try to offset us to families. We have a lot of smaller towns that are neighbors that have similar issues. So maybe we can share facilities or share costs. And I hope to encourage and continue taking advantage of all the state and grants that can be utilized for improving our facilities, our fields, our buildings. I'm really excited about the MSBA building project. And I think that's a great step in the right direction. It will provide a lot of state funding. And I'm just interested in communicating with across-town boards to work together to make sure that we're maximizing the income that we have to use towards the schools.
Thanks, Amy. Next to David Palito on, how do you plan to improve school buildings, athletic fields, and learning supports within our limited budget?
Okay, I'm suddenly not cooperating. You know, I think that Amy and David actually had a couple of great ideas there. But I think first thing we need to do is actually separate. Our budget is an actual, is an operating budget. It's not a capital budget. While we do sometimes put smaller projects in there by our our community agreement, we actually have to take all capital projects out of our budget. I believe it's after $25,000 and actually separate them within our budget. So, you know, that being said, there are tremendous opportunities actually already available. Take this, you know, the field infrastructure prop that's about to sort of come to light. And, you know, build, bring the tennis courts on to campus, new softball fields, lights, new football fields. I'm sorry, new, like just entire stadium and track. There's already CPC funds set aside for that, I believe, in the realm of $500,000. Please don't quote me these numbers. It's been a loss. I've spoken to them. In addition, there's also the patent estate is, has given a grant that's actually in holding right now. And I think it's about that same amount of $500,000 for these field improvements. Because as their, you know, community enrichment, you know, once we actually, if we were to build these community, these fields, we could actually use them as fundraising efforts and renting them out to different tournaments and things like that. So it's actually could end up becoming cash positive for the district. As far as the school building goes, right, having just everything renewed resources actually will end up sort of lowering our bills overall as a district in the long run. Plus, when you take into account the MSBA, you know, we're not supposed to talk numbers, but you're talking about like sixty cents on a dollar that you're paying for the building. You know, that's a substantial help to our, you know, our small community like us into actually getting up to date with our facilities.
Thanks, David. Really appreciate that. Brian, you're, I get the last crack at this question. How do you plan to improve our school buildings, athletic fields, and learning supports within this current limited budget?
Sure. Thanks, Paul. Yeah. So I think, you know, the overarching approach to, to really any budget is, is to maximize the, the dollars, you know, at hand. You know, without quote unquote slashing any areas of the budget. You know, it really takes creativity to get the most out of, out of what's, you know, in place. And, you know, basically, you know, protect any more, you know, taxpayer dollars that, that may require it. I think, you know, I think obviously state sources come into play. Would be interesting to understand any private routes that, that might be, you know, feasible as a turn, as a source of financing. I love, you know, David's idea, David P. on, you know, when something's actually in place, having the opportunity to make it an income generating source. So, you know, I know that the, that the MSBA won't necessarily participate when there isn't a more holistic, you know, build out or, or improvement in place. And so, you know, I think the idea might be, let's start talking about, you know, the, the overall improvements to the high school and being able to tack that on with it. In terms of learning support, I, I kind of mentioned it briefly earlier. I, I love this, the pilot program for, you know, monitoring the literacy and, you know, assuming that that's successful, being able to roll that out over other academic areas and being able to apply for grants for those similar needs. I think that's just a smart use of resources and will definitely be impactful for, you know, measuring kind of the learning loss and help accelerate learning. Thanks.
Thanks, Brian. Much appreciated. And we are now at the point where we're going to turn to, to closing statements and really thank you all for answering those questions. I know that the, the League of Women Voters had a, a real large number of questions and tried to reflect kind of the main themes that were submitted by our town and community. There are a lot more questions and I know that you've kind of, I believe you've all made your contact information available to our town. And I, and I would urge you to, to continue to make your communication available and open and transparent. You know, there, a lot of these issues are, they're not easy issues and they're bound and constrained by many of the state and federal and local regulations. And I know that a lot of the parents just want to see the best for our schools, but there's a lot of complexity. And so it's really hard to be clear in two minutes with things that are very complex. So I really appreciate you sharing those ideas and also trying your best within a limited time. I also think we barely went over on any question, which is amazing. So that's also reflects so well on our community's eloquent efficiency with how you answer questions. So we're going to go to our closing statements now and David Frankel, you'll, you'll go first and the others will follow. And your closing statement is, you have two minutes, if you'd like, to, to share with the town why, why you're, you think you're in best position to, to be elected to our school committee.
Yeah, I probably am in a fairly unique position because I'm, I'm semi-retired. I'm for better or worse, I'm going to be 75 this year. I'm in a good income position. I, I can give the town the time I think this job will take. Which is, I gather probably at least something of the order of 10 hours a week. And, and maybe on occasion, much more when you get to a peak of, of certain kind of projects. I'm very concerned that the town plans, town strategic plans are being done separately from Hamilton and Wyndham. And so I would really focus time and attention, and I, I got a lot of this feedback from the community already, on reconciling those and, and doing the, during the legwork between the committees, all the committees in both towns to try and bring some coherence to, to the plans so that we can in fact not overtax the community and that we can align our objectives because there's that, that lack of alignment from committee to committee has meant that, that a lot of aspirations have never been met. And so I think that's a role that I, I would enjoy playing and I have a lot of experience in doing. And, and, and that's really much more on the strategic objective side. But I think that can have a huge impact on how we look at even the short-term budgets. Because if you see help is coming and there's a really good determination to get there and a collective support of getting there, you can put up with certain short-term problems a lot more easily.
Thanks, David.
Let's go out to say thank you.
Much appreciated.
The opportunity to.
Yes, of course. Amy, your closing statement.
Um, first, I again want to say thank you for this opportunity. This was so wonderful to get together. And I just want to reiterate, I'm a person who loves to volunteer and get directly involved. I'm an academic who takes a neutral approach to issues. I listen to all sides. I weigh data and research in order to make decisions. I will continue my approach of community minded listening and supporting along with my aim to be a helper and a leader in building greater excellence for schools and restoring a sense of community to both our towns. I am invested in this community. My children are young. I really love it here. I want to stay here and I want the best for my family and all of our families. Thank you to the candidates for running and volunteering and in the community, I wanted to say I'm open to answering any questions and you can email me at amycomebergerhwsd@gmail.com. Thanks.
Thanks, Amy. David, Dave Palito, you're, you're next with the closing statement.
Uh, great. You know, the, thank you for this opportunity tonight to really come together. It's been eye opening for me as well. You know, just hearing what the other four candidates have to say. Really did some great ideas and a lot of passion in the room. And it makes me happy to, to sort of think about that and think about, you know, partnering up with any of them and continuing my work here on the school board, on the school committee, you know. Just in closing, you know, I, I'm a graduate from, from here, 1992. I, I didn't bring that up in the opening, you know, in my introduction, but you know, I have children in all three levels, elementary, middle and high school here. You know, we're here for the education. I'm passionate about education. I'm passionate about, about this town. I, I love this town. And, you know, whether or not I actually win reelection, I will still serve this community in some capacity. You know, obviously in coaching more sports, but also probably volunteering for different boards. You know, we will need to put together some boards for these new projects coming online. And, you know, that, that's just what I like to do and that's who I am. Excuse me. That being said, I, I do think that, you know, I would love to continue on a, as a school board member, just being sort of the, the ranking person in the room to sort of have that feedback on where we've, where we've come from. You know, because we have made great progress over the past six years while I've been here. We are one of the highest ranking districts in, you know, in the state and in the country, right? In, 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 and I want to continue to grow. And we are in such a great place. We have so many opportunities. You know, as a district right in front of us that I want to continue doing the work that I've been doing for years for our community and really hope that you guys will vote for me.
Thanks, David. Really appreciate it. Brian, your two minutes is next.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. You know, I'd echo all the other candidates. Thank you for the time. Thank you for everyone running. Clearly we all have a passion for volunteerism. I, I know I certainly do, you know, being incredibly active on the sports side, you know, I, I'm truly looking for the next challenge, so to speak. And I, I think this is a great opportunity to, to fill that. You know, I really want to be listening actively to the community, understanding, you know, really what's, what's near and dear to their hearts and, you know, don't, I, I'm not looking to, you know, take over something and, and work in silos. I, I want to make it, you know, interactive, of, of course. I, I just, you know, the prospect of being on the school committee, I, I think is an incredibly high honor and I don't take that lightly. I, I have learned a lot along the way during this three to four, four week campaign, if you will. And I look forward to, to learning a lot more, especially from those who, who have that experience so far. And and, and again, I look forward to, to continuing the, the dialogue and, you know, to the extent I, I'm successful, then, then, you know, good things to come. But if not, I'd echo David P. and I'll, I'll continue to serve this community in other ways. So thank you again for the time and, and yeah, get out and vote, everyone.
Thanks, Brian. Courtney, get the last word.
Last word. Thank you, League of Women Voters. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, fellow candidates. It was fun. I was nervous, but this was fun. And so, you know, just to kind of reiterate, I grew up in this town. I graduated from the school. Dave and I were there at the same time in the nineties. There's a lot of people like the two of us in this community. And the reason so many of us come back is because it is an awesome place to grow up. It's an awesome place to have a family. The education's awesome. You know, you go downtown to Patton Park on a Saturday afternoon and everybody's there and everybody's in a good mood and it's, it's great. So I think that's why so many of us are willing to volunteer our time, you know, it's, it's a good feeling and the level of engagement in this election's off the charts. I, it's, it's pretty, it's enlightening, it's fascinating, but I think it's great. I think I would say to everybody, stay engaged, keep following it, keep keeping us on our toes, keep pushing us. It moves things forward. And, you know, me personally, I, I don't know what I don't know, but you know, I'm like a 20-year vet in my career. I know how to figure things out and analyze and ask questions. I, I do not like to walk in silos either. I'm a total team player. I like to lean on people who have experience and then, you know, say, hey, have you thought about this way? And play off each other like that. So I'm excited about this opportunity, win or lose. I think we are in a very good position as a community and thank you.
Thanks, Courtney. And thanks again. I'm, I'm going to turn it back over to Christina, but, and just in closing, we made it through tonight without any interruptions from pets or children or anyone else. So that's, that's for celebrate that. I thank the, the Hamilton Women's League of Voters who also is a real strong source of volunteerism. They do a lot of work in town on many issues with our community. So really want to thank Christina and that whole team for, for this really important service and, and also to all of you. I mean, I know we, there's a lot of active engagement in town. It's really great to be able to hear you and see you almost in person, but at least to be able to kind of listen to your ideas and see that we have a lot more in common than we have, than we have a part in this community. And I really think it's important. You need to care for each other deeply and meaningfully for schools and communities to work well. And you can see across these, and I, I assume the other two members were unfortunately unable to join us, that we all care and that matters. And I think we have more in common than we have not in common around what we care for. So I deeply appreciate all your time. I have three children. I'm not sure where they are, but they're in some schools around town. And I appreciate your efforts to help make their experiences as positive as, as can be. April 7th is the voting day and I also want to urge our town to please vote. It's local elections don't, don't get as much of voting as they should. And we should, we should really be able to show our, our unity by coming out and voting. So thank you all again. And Christina, I'll turn it back over to you to, to close things out.
Thanks, Paul. Well, the league would like to big, give a big thank you to all the candidates for running and for participating this evening. And special thanks to you, Paul, and to our timekeeper Tess. Our time here was limited and we realized that. We encourage voters who have follow-up questions to contact candidates directly to get those answered. And please consider joining us and working with other local volunteers so that we can continue to provide this type of voter education. You can visit us at l w v h w.org to learn more. And don't forget to attend town meeting on April 2nd in both towns. And remember to vote in the general election on April 7th. Thank you for watching.